Good evening.
Test, test.
I know what happened last time.
Yes, it'll go perfectly with my coffee.
Test.
And they go with the shirt.
Test, 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 test. Testing, testing. Testing, testing.
I don't like gummies. I just saw.
Test, test.
Gummies for, no, gummies for adults for vitamins.
Oh, no, thank you.
People could not know these things. See, I never got used to them.
Joe, man, we're trying to get started.
Listen, DiCaprio was given an assignment and he knows the assignment.
Sweets, bring the sweets.
Every meeting. And not just meetings, any event that he shows up to, he's supposed to have candy.
Because he wants to eat too.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening.
Hold on, Martha's not ready.
I don't think you're coming through.
In a couple of minutes.
Testing, test, testing.
Okay, that's good.
You guys can hear it okay, Martha? Okay.
You gotta get closer.
It's like Jill's at a movie theater.
We gotta wait for Martha's key.
So your high school did okay?
Yeah, everything, yeah. The opening. The freshman academy is really good.
You can go ahead and start without me. This wants to do a whole bunch of stuff. I don't want to do it.
Test, there you go. Martha, when you're ready, Martha.
No, go right ahead. I'll catch up later.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, I would like to call the September 7th, 2022 Meeting of the Board of Education to order. The Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll accept the motion to approve the agenda presented before us with the addition of Resolution Number 7C4. So moved, Erica. Thank you, Erica. Second?
Second.
Second, Princilla? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of August 31st, 2022 Board of Education meeting are presented for approval. May I have a motion to accept these minutes? Motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Princilla. Second?
Second, Erica.
Thank you, Erica. Any additions, corrections, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Privilege of the floor, Martha. Do we have anyone?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you. And we will turn to our superintendent for comments.
Good evening, board members, and to those watching at home, welcome back. Happy first day to students and families. Obviously, today marks our first day with kids, but my comments will rewind a little bit and cover a little bit of last week. So we had our staff opening day last Thursday. We welcomed, obviously, all of our faculty back to the district. It'd been the first time that we had gathered together to set the tone for the year, but most importantly, to celebrate us this year and to celebrate the work of the last two years with the pandemic, all the various constraints that we had. But we began our morning together at Proctors. We started with some great music by our very own Alex Torres and his Latino Orchestra. Then came some dancing and everyone was moving and shaking. It definitely was a great, fun start to our school year. There was a lot of laughs, a lot of joy in the room. But we also had the opportunity to set the stage for the new year and to talk to our faculty about the work moving forward here in Schenectady. It was little, maybe a lot, different than other years by all the accounts that we got from people as we exited or all the feedback that we received. But it was upbeat and, most importantly, it was a celebration of us. I enjoyed reading all the comments from folks on social media and on Facebook. We did post the video of the dancing and all kinds of great celebrations that people took with this picture frame that said, "Welcome back." But again, I think the most important thing was that we were recognizing and celebrating each other as we welcomed and prepared to welcome our kids back into the district. Our opening, though, did catch the attention of the New York State Education Department's Office of Bilingual Education and World Languages, and so they've asked us to provide a little bit of a write-up and summary that highlights our inclusiveness, our creativity around our opening. And so we will be sending that in. I think it's due Friday, and they'll be sharing it in an upcoming newsletter, which will be shared across the state. Today, obviously, was student opening day, and today we welcomed, obviously, all of our families and their children to our school district. We were honored to host the New York State Commissioner of Education, Dr. Betty Rosa, and Board Regent Katiana, Dr. Katiana? Katie, I'm gonna say his name wrong, but I'm gonna try. Katiana? Katina, I'm sorry, Katina. They visited Pleasant Valley and they came to the high school to take a walk through our new freshman academy. And so it was a great visit. Our kids, many of them, I think, were still shocked to be in back in school because they were really quiet. So, you know, they gotta warm up and get back into the groove of things. But they both enjoyed hearing from some of our students who did share about their plans for this upcoming year as a freshman, what they were looking forward to coming back and to school. So we did post some pictures. There'll be more in my weekly brief with a little bit more detail and write-up. There were members of the media on hand, so you may see stories tonight in the news or tomorrow morning. But overall, we had a great opening day. I also visited Martin Luther King Day as well, and we had a couple of other special guests delivering book bags to the school. The Assemblyman Angelo Santa Barbara and Congressman Tonko was delivering from the Library of Congress a set of books to the district. And, I just want to make sure I got that right. Yep, a set of books, and he also read to the kids, which was fantastic. A group of third graders, they were great in the learning area. So again, look for photos. I'll be highlighting some of that. And tonight, the board should have received a working policy, a working procedure, a working draft for this school year. When I got here last July, the board had asked that I take a look at creating some kind of grading policy or framework. And so this is the framework that we are using moving into this year. This was communicated to all of our staff, all of our building leadership and administration, and we will be sharing with parents. But we want the board to, obviously, also take a look at this as well. We'll be coming back to have further discussion on this. I do appreciate the collective nature that this was put together with our SFT members, our principals, Deputy Superintendent Dr. Sean Mason, Dr. Lorraine Chisholm helped co-chair a committee internally in the district. And I think, to me, the most powerful thing here, we were approaching this from a grading-for-equity type of approach or lens, where we're trying to have some tough conversations to ensure kids have always an opportunity to succeed despite some of the challenges that they may not be in control of. One example is the homework conversation, right? Does everyone have the same support at home? What does homework look like? And so we're not there yet fully, but this is more for how the grades go into report cards. So I wanted to make sure you got that now because I will be referencing it to our parents in my weekly brief and letting them know some of these things are coming down the pipe. Last, two more things. There's a letter-day calendar that we'll be sharing with families as well. And this is just simply to remind them what letter this school is on. And so sometimes kids have physical education on A-Day, they have art on B-Day, and our traditional calendar doesn't normally include those letters. So we are trying to publish a letter-day calendar so that parents know, like, today's a B-Day, that means you got art. And it's the same letter across every building, which was one of the things we wanted to avoid was, you know, why is it A-Day here, B-Day here? I got two kids, two different places, high school, middle school, so it's gonna be the same letter day across the board. It also gives us some, the ability for us to master schedule more strategically across the district, how to better use our resources in terms of shared staff. And so we will be publishing that in my weekly brief on Friday. It'll also be posted on our website and we'll post it online. And so just want to mention that. Last but not least, obviously, the pandemic is still not as prevalent, we talked about, but COVID is still here. And so people are still getting sick, and we just want to remind folks that there is a vaccination clinic. Ellis Family Health is hosting their annual vaccination clinic. This ensures that kids can easily get vaccinated, and it's not just COVID vaccine. It's the measles, the mumps, rubella, all the other vaccines that are, I think there's 11 of them that are typically required to be in school. So it's more than just COVID vaccine. They will still do those, but this is beyond the vaccination clinic. So it'll be held each day, Monday, September 19th through Thursday, September 22nd, from 4:30 to 8:00 p.m. Each day at the McLennan Street Health Center. And we will put this on our website in multiple languages, and so this will be also in my brief on Friday. That concludes my comments.
Is there a date by which?
It's gonna be every.
The students need to have vaccinations, all vaccinations.
Yeah, we could put that in there. The vaccination day, Andrea, if you want? Yep, she's got it in her.
I mean, I knew I saw it last year.
Yeah, I think, I wanna say.
Pandemic to do it with.
The September 16th? Yep, so we'll get it out. And we usually send those individuals a direct letter because they will be impacted. And in the years past, we have not denied them with it because of the pandemic.
Right.
But just, I'm not sure if they're gonna be as stringent this year as they were in the past.
I was gonna say, something sounds wrong because the 16th is before those dozen days, so.
Thanks for clarifying.
Okay, by 9:23, students should have their vaccinations as required by the district. And by DOH and whatever.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll continue with board comments. We'll start with Vivian and then go around the table. Vivian?
Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, I just wanted to welcome all of our students, either new or returning this year, and also to our faculty, our new faculty as well as our returning faculty. Welcome. Thank you in advance for all that you do. We know that your job is very, very challenging and we appreciate everything that you are doing for our students and their families. I also wanted to mention, if anyone has not had the chance to look on the Schenectady School District Facebook page, there were some pictures posted of some of our children that went back to school, and they looked beautiful. So families out there, you did a great job, and they looked stunning and beautiful, and I'm so happy for them, and I'm very, very excited to see where they go this year, and that's it.
Hello, everyone. Again, happy first day of school. I challenge us all, especially even myself, to remember all of this excitement and optimism in our brains. And when it gets to January and February and things get trying and hard, to remember how we feel today on the first day of school and carry that on through. And over to you, Jamaica.
I always want to be after Erica. So it is, it is the first day of school, and I imagine this is gonna be a common thread across the table. I want to remind parents and everyone that there's a whole host of information available, and it is at our fingertips, but it's also on our phones. While many of us spend all of our time on the internet, there are still parents and families that make phone calls and that to remind everyone, call the principal, call the teachers. If you have questions, don't hesitate to ask. They are there for that purpose, but also, if you have not already, download the app. Download the app. You will get updates specific to your building, whichever ones you select, and in the language you select. Because, you know, that's why they asked about us and bilingual stuff. And then I guess the other thing is sports are beginning, right? So if you haven't had a chance to check the schedule for when our home games and away games are, I often encourage folks, if you can, go to any away game for whatever sport we have, whether your child is competing or not. Whenever I've gone to any of our games, I see how often other schools show up. And it can be hard for our kids when they don't have that same cheering section. Maybe it's just hard on me. That's fine. But I would encourage folks that when you can, all of the things are starting. There'll be plays coming, there'll be sports, whatever you can make, get out and go because our kids are amazing and they deserve our support every single day. Wait, one more thing. So we, I know, it's the coffee. I'm also really excited because we all have schools that we're liaisons for, right? So I have not yet made my emails to go check out the buildings, but it's one of the things that I enjoyed doing last year for the first time ever, was getting to know the buildings and be that level of just engagement and learn more about the schools that I might not know so much about. And so each of us has that opportunity to learn about buildings. I have two buildings that are the same as last year, but I have a new one, and it happens to be MLK, and I'm super excited because in case no one knows, I went there. And it is my favorite school, and it was the best principal I ever had was Mr. Acocks. That's right, Skip Acocks, but he was just Mr. Acocks because I was a child. And so I look forward to each of us having that opportunity to get inside our buildings and see the teachers and the staff and just really be engaged in that way. So that's the last thing. Thank you.
I was able to attend the opening day on September 1st, and it was lively. I'm going to have to take lessons in Caribbean dancing. But maybe I could do that this Saturday at the Caribbean Festival over at Central Park. How's that for a segue? I would, following up on Jamaica's comment about sports beginning, I did take some time last night to go through the sports calendar, to go through the website in general, and did see that the first football game is this Friday night at 6:00 p.m. And following up on that, I saw a wonderful video of our student athletes talking about sportsmanship and YouTube video, so that was, that was quite interesting, quite interesting to see. And so as I, as has been noted by everyone, we welcome everyone back. It's good to see activity down at this end of my street, and sometimes a little too much, but at the same time, we're glad to have everyone back. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to echo what everyone else says. Welcome back, everybody, and we look forward to a great year. Also, I believe the waiver for the free and reduced application is ending this year, so parents have to fill out the application by...
Yeah, we're community eligibility, right, still? If that's correct? Terry? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so everyone's still free because we qualify as.
Oh, good.
Community eligibility, so that burden is not on ours.
Oh, good.
Other districts, that burden is.
You just scared me.
Yeah, so, so all of our students will still have free meals.
All right.
Regardless of an application.
All right, that's good. So eat free and enjoy school.
Thank you, Princilla. That works.
Yeah, I know.
Good evening. So I also was in attendance for opening day last Thursday on September 1st. It was a really great way to spend my Thursday morning, much better than sitting behind a computer all day. So again, Alex Torres and his Latin Orchestra, amazing job. The energy was up. They got people out of their seats. It was nice to see President Bernice Rivera and Superintendent Soler up on stage with all of the other administrators and everyone else dancing. I got up there right at the tail end and got right back down. Hung out in the back. But if you did miss them, they will be at Jerry Burrell Park Saturday, September, I believe it's Saturday, September 17th.
The superintendent in Bernice or?
Or, no, no, or Alex Torres.
Alex Torres, Alex Torres. September 17th from 2:00 to 5:00 is a part of Hamilton Hills Culture Fest Summer Series, and that's on our district website. I'd also, I want to talk about, just really briefly, Senior Class President Marina Chaco Taiko. Hands down, I had chills listening to her speak. She did an amazing job. I just want to, you know, just formally say thank you to her again here and on this stage just to say what a great job. I'm not gonna forget the analogy regarding the lamps. I thought it was fantastic. She did a beautiful job, and I'm excited for what she does as she graduates this year. Third thing on that, Administrator DiCaprio. Yes. Yes, natural ability to just kind of command the crowd. I mean, he did a great job up there. I don't know how you did it, but you did a great job. It took me back to high school, and I was like, ah, it's all coming back. The old varsity jacket.
I was gonna say, it must be the jacket.
It was awesome. So really nice job. But overall, thank you to Superintendent Soler, the team, and everyone for putting on such a fantastic event before the first day of school, which leads me to my second comment. Happy first day back to school. I hope today was filled with lots of smiles, back-to-school outfits, as my daughter was very excited to show off, and just seeing friends that no one saw for the entire summer. It was just really good to hear the kids outside walking the neighborhood after school and things like that, so that was great. We talked about Schenectady Caribbean Day. Back-to-school night again is coming up quickly, so September 20th is, I believe, middle school, the 21st is elementary, the 22nd is the high school, and the 27th is Scala, but I believe information will come home regarding times and things of that nature. And lastly, I will be attending a board officer's training through NISBA on September 23rd, so I'm really looking forward to kind of broadening my skills as a board member.
Thank you, Nohalani. Welcome back, students, if you're up watching the board meeting. Welcome back. A lot of my sentiments were also shared, so I'll just share some things that weren't shared. I do want to thank the crossing guards, police officers, and bus drivers who were the first point of contact for our students and families this morning. As I was driving to 108, I saw so many adorable little kids. I passed Central Park and Keene, and excited and full of energy, and the crossing guards and the police officers and the bus drivers were, you know, very kindly, "Okay, let's take our time. Let's get on the bus, let's walk, you know, across the street." So I do want to thank all those folks. Also, students, we are excited to have you back, and we have your back. We are looking forward to your sports games, your plays, your band and orchestra concerts, the cheerleaders and dancers at games, spelling bees, school events, and all the multitude of great things that you're going to be part of this year to grow, learn, and succeed. Hashtag Schenectady Rising, and a few more things. I do want to mention opening night. Mr. DiCaprio and Ms. and, oh, sorry, yes, Lynn Rutnick, Deputy Superintendent Lynn Rutnick, you both are amazing. You should be, I don't even know, they were the MCs of the event, and they were priceless, you both. I mean, you complimented each other. You just. It was good. I told Mr. DiCaprio, you know, you have to be my hype man. I meant, you both did an amazing job. You really did, and the entire team who worked on it, kudos. It was an amazing day. I was telling Nohalani afterwards, I was skipping to work because I was so inspired by everything that happened that day. You all did such a fabulous, fabulous job. Yes, the entire team, absolutely, the entire team did a fabulous job. I do want to also give kudos to Christian Fields. She, he was a senior who sung the National Anthem, Marina, as Nohalani mentioned, and the Yates dancers with some teachers and the principal of the Yates. They did a dance for us, and that was awesome, too, and some of the speakers, Carrie White, Teacher of the Year, Megan Lebertucci, and Katie Ferguson, all Teacher of the Year, and they did great speeches. I also want to thank Tracy Gelston, the Schenectady High School music teacher who did the musical accompaniment, J R O T C, our faculties who were brave enough to get onstage and dance merengue with Alex Torres. It was awesome, and of course, Alex Torres' band. I do, oh, and I also want to shout out the superintendent. He did a great job being the intermission during the festivities, and he shared the mission and vision of the district, and he shared what the road ahead was going to look like, and it was a very, a very good feat because in between, there was a lot of dancing and a lot of music and a lot of excitement, but he came up and he did his thing, and people were paying attention. So we want to thank him for sharing, you know, what we're looking forward to in the, in the rest of the year. And also, I do want to share that he talked about hashtag Schenectady Rising, because we see it, we all have it on our back of our t-shirts, and he explained that means redesigning, rebuilding, and reigniting Schenectady City Schools with a commitment and dedication to excellence in teaching and learning, equity, engagement, and efficiency. And I also want to alert everyone in the board, there is a video that the kids made. It was mostly high school students. Patriot Pride is an awesome video, and it's welcoming everybody back to the school district, so I, you know, urge you to take a look at that. The, today, the first day. I do want to thank Dr. Betty Rosa and Regent Katania, as Doctor, or as Superintendent Soler had mentioned. The first visit was at Pleasant Valley, and then the second one was at the Schenectady High School. And I do want to thank the leadership at Pleasant Valley, Principal Howard, and the leadership of the high school, Principal Green. They were escorting all of us. It was like a group of executive cabinet administrators. It was a whole, you know, good crew of educators that were in the hallway. And it was just awesome to see the students. The students were so, even though they were kind of like, oh, it's 7:00 in the morning, 8:00 in the morning, they still looked very excited to be in the school. So we do thank the commissioner. Her presence was welcome, and it was nice for her, to see her talking to our students, our staff, and our fac, and our, and our faculty. So, and I do want to just share now some updates of things that have been going on in the district. We had three, two great articles on the Daily Gazette about some of the employment or some of the faculty that we have brought on to the school district. And I know we've talked a lot throughout last year about safety and about mental health. So I did want to share, there are two articles, and I'll send the link to the board, the Daily Gazette. But all of our schools have counselors now, so all four, all of our middle schools and elementary schools, high schools, all have a counselor. We have hired 14 in total counselors. We have 40 counselors, but that also includes intensive case management. And by the way, school counselor roles and ratios, American School Counseling Association has information and data about what is the standard ratio and what is the preferred ratio, so that's a great website to take a look at also. All schools have 55, or all schools have social workers. We have a total of 55. We have 22 psychologists. And then in terms of the updates for promoting safe and welcoming schools, we have five restorative practice specialists. We have 24 cultural community engagement folks. We have 34 security monitors, which we see with the red shirt all over. Pleasant Valley, the high school, I saw them all over. We have 17 school safety officers and three CEOs. And then kind of transitioning, looking on our website, and I think Jamaica had mentioned, I think Nohalani too, we have such a plethora of information on our website. There is a great page that is called, "What Do I Do When I Have A Question Or Concern?" And this is great for board members as well, and I'll pass this around. But on there, it helps parents, families, and also board members know if, like, a community member or family reaches out to us and says, "Hey, I have, you know, a concern with a child in the classroom." It tells you here who we can suggest that they talk with, so I'm gonna, I know you all are on this side, if you don't mind passing that. But it's also on the website for our parents. It's under directory, so right on our main page, you would click on directory, and then it says, "Not Sure Who To Call." You click on that, and you'll find all that information, and it's really good. The third page, though, when you look at it, I think we still are updating because I know some people are retired and things like that, but it's a great resource for not just board members, but also our families, okay? Caribbean Day, you mentioned. I did want to mention, we're gonna have our first work session on September 28th, and it will be virtual from 4:15 to 5:30, and that work session is just geared on looking at the board handbook and to have some conversations on how we can then condense it and pull out some of the things that we think are necessary in the handbook, but then things that we might want to put on our board docs or things we want to eliminate. Because right now, it's like 120 pages or so. And then all of you do have a chart of the liaisons, the school liaisons, and I think the last board meeting, I mentioned it, but then also the committees. All the board members are on committees, and that eventually will also be on our website so that people know what committees the board members are on as well as the school liaisons that they're going to be working with. And you'll find that our, the board will probably start sending emails out to the principals in the middle or at the end of October or so, okay? And that concludes my remarks. So the next item on the agenda is the champion for change. And before Kathy presents, I do want to mention something here. So Schenectady City School District is being recognized by NISBA for partnering with CDT. So Schenacti City School District is being recognized by NISBA for partnering with CDTA in creating the Universal Access Program. Schenacti City School District is dedicated to removing barriers and promoting success for all students that receive and need transportation. CDTA has provided transit cards for 650 students for transportation primarily to school and auxiliary programs at school functions. For our new City As Our Campus program, CDTA provided an additional 80 cards to support our students. The cards are also provide access to internships, jobs, and other activities to help develop students as upstanding community members. We have spent tireless hours working on improving relationships with the community, and we are thankful for our partnership with CDTA. We are looking forward to a continued, long-lasting partnership in the future. And according to NISBA, the Champions Of Change program was started...
I can talk about it.
Oh, okay. So our Area 7 NISBA Director Kathy Lewis will present the NISBA Champion Of Change Resolution.
Good evening. I'm going to come out here because I want people to be able to see this, I think, it'll be better. And we want to have Al and...
Yeah, Al, Jonathan, Dr. Mason, come on down. I don't know if Nicole's here or not. No? Okay.
Whenever someone says, "Come on down," it reminds me of Price's...
Is there a microphone there for you, Kathy?
Oh, so many things. So many things.
You need me to hold it up for you?
John, you want to grab it? On behalf of the New York State School Board Association, President Peggy Zuckabee and the Executive Director, Bob Snyder, I am here as the Area 7 Director to present the Champions Of Change banner to the Schenacti City School District for the CDTA Universal Access Program that you gentlemen have been involved in getting going here. So, as mentioned by Bernice, there are, well, I know there were three additional runs added this spring, and we're up to, what, 800 kids that have...
Many as they can get.
As many as you can get, I know. And, and their access across the capital district. I just saw an ad on, on CDTA's, on television for moving transportation forward. They're really trying all different kinds, and so this is just another step in that recognition. Now, let me tell you about the Champions Of Change program that NISBA does. It's, it's a non-competitive program, and I have nothing to do with it apart from presenting. I want to be perfectly clear about that. Besides presenting these to some of the 64 school districts that I have in Area 7, so I cover the area up to the southern Adirondacks, east to the Two Borders, and, and west, just past us, I think to Scotia-Glenville, that's, that's the territory I cover in, so a lot of school districts. So they look at the daily news, the various newspapers, what they hear from the news, and that sort of thing, and they make a selection on programs that we have, that different school districts have implemented, and how innovative are they, and how much do they impact. And I think this is our fourth one, is it? Something like that. I mean, it's incredible. I feel almost guilty about it because I'm presenting it here ourselves, but, but I just did one last week, I think I mentioned at Shenandoah. And, and so, they're for all different kinds of things, and it's been very informative to hear what they are. Now, as you gentlemen know, there are CDTA programs in Troy and in Albany, and I believe one has even just gotten started in Amsterdam. And so, all of these things are going to combine to make movement for jobs and secondary education and so on, for people who don't have much access to transportation. And, and that's, that's what will help in doing this with, with the kids. So, once again, this is the banner, and I don't know if any of you want to speak specifically about certain aspects of...
Jonathan, don't be shy.
Well, yeah, you know, I was, the only thing I was thinking walking up here this evening is very rarely do I get called back someplace a year later to get told how great it's going. So this is a good feeling. It's been a lot of team effort, everyone's worked hard. I remember sitting in the superintendent's office just over a year ago with Al and the rest of the crew, and we're just, we're happy it's working out. Today was day one, so of course, there were a couple of challenges Al and the team worked through, but we're excited to get it going, and we're having conversations about finding more ways for more students to have more access. So, thank you to the board, thank you to the superintendent, everyone for being so proactive and innovative and being part of this program. We look forward to a longstanding relationship.
I was, I was really concerned about doing this on September 7th, first day of school administration.
All things being equal, I think we had, the amount of challenges and students that we had, we could fit on one hand. So given what we're talking about, I think we did okay.
Awesome. Thank you.
I'm a good photo, put Kathy in there so we can share with... And then Karen, we'll need to get that so that NISBA can have it.
I think they're making a collection of all the banners across the state. This is a program across the state, so all 13 areas, people are presenting banners on the site to school districts. So I think it's quite...
So Kathy, the only issue is, we may need two, because CDTA is going to want one to hang in their office. We're going to want one to hang in transportation.
We'll get a lunch.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks for coming today.
If I could just take a couple minutes. This program has taken almost...
Microphone.
Yeah, he's on, he's on.
Oh, I can't.
A little closer. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
There you go. This program's taken about four years to get this going. John and I have met yearly to try to make this work. And to see this come together after all the hard work and all the meetings and, and all the planning that we put together is, is such an accomplishment for the kids. And one of the things that I was thinking about when the recognition was first brought forward was, this is about them. It's so, anything is so easy to do if you put them first, right? It doesn't feel like work when you're doing it. So when John and I were meeting, and we were kind of blue sky in it and trying to figure out, you know, how could we have the biggest impact on Schenacti, it was to, it was to give them the service that they deserve. The community pays for this stuff, too, and it helps our community as well. Because those routes that we have for our students, they provide service for our community as a whole. There's so much to this with the educational piece, looking for jobs, going to the mall, doing things that they couldn't do before, and giving them that opportunity is a huge win for us. So it's all about the kids, and thank you for your partnership. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Great. Well, congratulations, board, on assuming the responsibility and the activity for doing this as well. So I'll put this back so that other people can speak with this.
Okay. So a resolution recognizing CDTA Universal Access Program. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution. Motion?
So moved, Erica.
Thank you, Erica. Second?
Second, Nohalani.
Thank you, Nohalani. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Okay, NISBA Annual Convention Voting Delegate. So I did want to talk a little bit, I want to talk a little bit about this before we go into the resolution. So each board may send one member to the annual and special business meetings of the association as the official voting delegate. The voting delegates at the annual business meeting vote on a slate of officers for the association, including a president, a vice president, a second vice president, and a treasurer. They debate and vote on changes to the association's bylaws and resolutions that will establish the association's positions on various legislative and policy matters. The proposed resolutions represent items introduced by individual NISBA board, member boards, or the NISBA Board of Directors for consideration at the 2022 Annual Business Meeting. So prior to the meeting, the New York State Board of Education, or Board Association will host a voting delegate orientation, that all delegates are encouraged to attend. So I will attend that virtually on October 6th, okay? And then at our next board meeting on October 12th, a discussion of the proposed resolutions will be on the agenda. Everyone received a link on September 1st from NISBA. If you haven't gotten it, just let me know, but they sent something on September 1st, which is the resolution booklet. And it looks like this, but in color. Yeah, it looks like this, but in color. So everyone has one of these. They sent a link, but it's also on their website. So these are the resolutions that we'll have a conversation on, on October 12th. Okay? So now, so now, a resolution appointing a voting delegate to the 2022 Annual Convention of the New York State School Board Association. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Prinsella. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Student placements. A resolution approving the placement of certain special education pupils or students. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution. Motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Nohalani. Second?
Second, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Personnel items. A resolution approving consent items 7A1 through 7B5 concerning certain personnel actions. I'll accept a motion to approve these items. Motion?
So moved, Erica.
Thank you, Erica. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Nohalani. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Was 7A2 in here, in this part, or in someplace else?
It's later on, you're saying, about the resolution that was added?
Added, yeah.
Yes, that's later on. Okay. Appointment of Dignity Act coordinators. A resolution recommending the appointment of Dignity Act coordinators as part of the Dignity Act for All, or Dignity for All Students Act. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution. Motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Prinsella. Second?
Jamaica.
Thank you, Jamaica. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Salary adjustments. So a resolution approving a salary adjustment for employees in culture and community engagement specialist positions. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution. Motion?
So moved, Erica.
Thank you, Erica. Second?
Jamaica.
Thank you, Jamaica. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Salary adjustments for parent liaisons. A resolution approving a salary adjustment for employees in parent liaison positions. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution. Motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Jamaica?
Yep.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Prinsella. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Salary adjustment for executive leadership.
Bernice, before you go on, we need a waiver, a waiver of the 48-hour. I don't think I gave you that.
No.
That's on 7C4 here. Not the one we're doing. Yes, yes.
So I will accept a waiver of the 48-hour rule.
Move it, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy.
Second?
Thank you. Nohalani? Okay.
All those in favor?
All those in favor, I was getting you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Okay. So a salary adjustment, a resolution approving an amendment to the agreement between the Schenacti City School District and members of the executive leadership team. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution. Motion? Thank you, Nohalani. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Prinsella. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Business items. A resolution approving a contract with Capital Region Voces. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution. Motion?
So moved, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. Second?
Second, Vivian.
Thank you, Vivian. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. A resolution accepting the donation of $9,291.48 for the design of, and furniture for the Julie, and I apologize if I mispronounce the name, Gutowski Reading Nook at the Page Elementary School Library, given by James Gutowski. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution. Motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Nohalani. Second?
Second, Vivian.
Thank you, Vivian. Any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. A resolution authorizing the establishment of an extra classroom activity account for Travel Study Club at Mount Pleasant Middle School. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution. Motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Prinsella. Second?
Second, Erica.
Thank you, Erica. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. A resolution authorizing the establishment of an extra classroom activity account for Art and Gallery Club at Schenacti High School. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution. Motion?
So moved, Erica.
Thank you, Erica. Second?
Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. A resolution authorizing the establishment of a classroom activity account for Animation Club at Schenacti High School. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Thank you, Vivian?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's okay. Second?
Jamaica.
Thank you, Jamaica. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. A resolution accepting the donation of a certain parcel of land. I'll accept a motion to approve this resolution. Motion?
So moved, Erica.
Thank you, Erica. Second?
Second, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. Any discussion?
I, I think it's important to note, this is a piece of land that is contiguous, contiguous to other high school lands here on Grand Boulevard, and it, it had been the site of a house, but that house has been removed some years ago, and so the land has been checked and everything is, is okay. It was just a little square cutout, and essentially, what is, looks like our property, so now it will be.
Yeah, so the fence actually goes around it in the square. If you ever go up Grand Boulevard, you'll see it. So the hope is that we can now clean it up, make the fence whole, and then, and I know the mayor's been looking forward to us finally accepting it. It's been a long labor of, of, I say, love, because we were looking into making sure we covered ourselves, we tested the soil, we had the legal department involved to make sure everything was good, so there's no big surprise later on.
All right. Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. We have a second opportunity for comments from the public or board members. Kathy and then Jamaica?
I would like to mention that the Hall of Fame Dinner is coming up with recognition of past sports stars and so on. I believe it's September 20th, is it 19th, somewhere around there? So it, it's close.
September 18th is the golf tournament.
19th.
19th is the dinner.
Is the dinner. Right, okay.
And it's at Rivers Casino.
Nice, a new venue. And the other thing is mentioning the convention, I know Bernice and I have these orange. Yeah, you're wondering what these are. Well, aren't you curious how to do it? So that has to do with the fact that the convention is in Syracuse and they're the Syracuse orange. So if we can juggle these or do something else creative with them. And Nohalani, anyone who's registered, I think will get one of these. So please register. It's, it's a really great opportunity for board professional development. And so if we do that, then we are entered into receiving a Syracuse-based basket of goodies and educational tools and whatever at the convention. So that's what this is, what this is to promote. So there we go. And we didn't darn wish to have videoed that. So now we'll send it in and we'll, we'll be in the running. So I, I might throw. And we didn't practice that or even plan it. So.
That was the right direction to throw that in?
There wasn't any guarantee I was going to get it that far. So I just wanted to mention that and encourage people to, to do that so that, so that we can have as much participation as possible in all of the workshops. I believe there are 50 workshops. In fact, you're doing, doing one of the presentations, right? So that's what's coming up in, in October. It'll, it'll be fastly, fastly, is that a word? It'll be quickly here.
It's the end of the evening. So I, we're all talking about the, the first day of school. I think there should be a competition for which building has the best first day of the school. And here's why. Keene Elementary this year absolutely would have won. DJ Ketchup was outside and he was, he was, he had music. He was welcoming. I mean, everybody was welcoming the kids and the families, right? And kindergarten's a big deal. Roman started kindergarten today, friends.
Congrats Roman.
We won't talk about it. But it was good. No, it was good. But we're, we're standing there in line and like as soon as we're walking up, we hear the music as we're coming up and families are there. And Roman, of course, started dancing. And there was a dance battle between DJ Ketchup and Roman. Roman won, but it just.
Is there footage?
Yes, I have footage. I am a mom of four. I have practiced. But it just, it was the energy of coming into that building and families were talking to each other. You just couldn't help it because the vibe was, this is a positive experience I am walking into. And I think that every building each year should be challenged on, how are you making the first day special? And there should be judges. I'd be happy to judge.
Board liaisons can judge their schools.
The liaisons and, and whichever buildings the boards have for, you know, whatever. I, I don't know how everyone else's first day went, but Keene Elementary killed it.
Well, I will say the high school was upset. DJ Ketchup was not available for them. No, I think, I think Jamaica, your comments are, are real. I, I want to lift up our school staff, our principals in particular. They spent a lot of time and energy. They took the words we said at our opening day about celebrating us, celebrating our kids, letting them know, make this a special year. And you know, we talk about quote unquote normal, but we've put, we've asked each of them to give an extra degree more than they've done in the past to really make this different. And that extra degree, I think, I think that was Kane's extra degree of an opening day.
It was. And Central Park, Central Park staff were, were all outside, meeting and greeting and had everyone's schedule. No one's ready, including the building. But whether you got your schedule in advance or not, like everybody was outside. Principal was outside. They were all there. And again, it was indeed a different experience. Because you weren't just walking up to the door waiting for your kid to go in. And so you were able to ask and just, you know, like, I'm like, she's here for breakfast. Where are we going? It just, I only got to go to two buildings. But I hope we hear more about everyone else's first day experiences and how it was unique compared to two other times. But Keene Elementary won.
And I want to shout out DJ Ketchup because he's an alumni of Schenectady and he DJs all over the place. But I do want to mention Mount Pleasant Middle School, I was sitting down quietly waiting for a meeting and then I hear, "Let's get it started." So over the announcements, they were playing that and I just couldn't help my shoulder. But I do want to end by saying, all of us have Schenectady shirts on today. Because as a board, we're very proud. Thank you Jamaica for modeling the hashtag Schenectady Rising. We are so proud as a board to represent Schenectady. We are working hard. It's about our students. It is about our families. So we wanted to show pride in Schenectady today by representing, by wearing our Schenectady shirts. So Schenectady, staff, families, students, have a wonderful year. And we will see you back on October 12th at 6:30 here in the auditorium. Have a good evening, everyone. And I will adjourn the meeting.